Call our meeting to order and ask Councilman Woods to give us our invocations.
Oh, here with Father Lord, we thank you. Father, thank you Lord for bringing us through the hardy season into a lucky year. Father, we gather together, I thank you Lord for allowing this committee, this council order to stay together for a couple of years. Lord, let us continue Lord's love vision with your help and kindness, to make our kinder, the best kinder we can make. Father, we know that it is our pleasure to serve Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Our first item is to install and swear in our council members that were elected in the last election. So Judge Markeith is here and those of you that just were reelected, if you'll step forward and be sworn in.
Okay, folks, if you would raise your right hand, if you would repeat that for me. As you solemnly swear or affirm-
As you solemnly swear.
That I am duly qualified-
That I am duly qualified.
According to the Constitution of this state-
According to the Constitution of this state.
To exercise the duties of the office-
To exercise the duty of the office.
To which I have been elected.
To which I have been elected.
And that I will, to the best of my ability-
That I will, to the best of my ability-
Discharge the duties thereof-
Discharge the duties thereof.
And preserve, protect, and defend-
And preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of this state.
The Constitution of this state.
And of the United States.
And of the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God. Appreciate you.
Thanks Judge Heath, you're excused. Slide on home for this one. Thank you, therefore as long as we need you. Next up is approval of the agenda items. I know of no additions or corrections to the agenda. Does anyone else know of anything? If not, I'll entertain a motion that we approve the agenda as presented.
So move.
Second.
Second by Dr. Prince. All in favor, raise your right hand. It's unanimous. You good? Next up, we have the election of officers that we do each year at this time. So we elect the chairman and the vice chairman. I'll entertain a motion first for the chairman's position for next year.
I'd like to nominate Ron Martin, Chairman, twenty fifteen session.
I have a motion by Mr. Allen. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Steen. Are there any other nominations? All in favor of Mr. Martin, please raise your right hand. It's unanimous. Next up, we have the vice chairman for the same term. Is there any nominations for vice chairman?
Mr. Chair, I can nominate Jason Steen.
Seconded by Mr. Gladon. Are there any other nominations for vice chairman? Hearing none. All in favor, raise your right hand, Mr. Steen. It's unanimous. I want to thank Dr. Prince for serving as vice chairman and chairman and vice chairman and chairman, as I've done. And I look forward to Mr. Steen coming on. I'm one year, term limited of one more year, and I think it's good to have some new blood coming along on council leadership. And I encourage others to get involved so that we can all have a turn at leadership of the council. So moving forward, the next item on the agenda, we have the approval of minutes for the December night, twenty fourteen meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes as presented?
Chair, I move we accept the minutes as printed.
We have a motion by Dr. Prince. Is there a second?
A second.
Mr. Woods, all in favor, raise your right hand. It's unanimous. You want to abstain by Ms. Plato? She was absent. Next up, we have a proclamation to be presented to Mr. Prentice Bostick. So I ask Mr. Bostick there.
Come forth.
If you will, at this time. My focus is on this. Come on up here. I'm all embarrassed. I'm gonna read this thing. Mr. Bostick is retired. He's been here so long that we couldn't find the stolen tablet that they wrote down when he first retired. But I knew he was here when I got here and he was barely getting out before I knew it. So the proclamation reads, whereas Marlborough County Council wishes to acknowledge the contributions of Mr. Prentice Bostick as an employee of the Marlborough County Recreation Department, and whereas Mr. Prentice Bostick has been employed by the Marlborough County Recreation Department for more than thirty years, and whereas Mr. Prentice Bostick retired as an employee of Marlborough County on December thirty first, twenty fourteen, and whereas Mr. Prentice Bostick has made many positive contributions to our county and shown tireless and tremendous devotion for the quest of providing better and quality lives for the citizens of Marlborough County. Now therefore, Marlborough County Council, on this thirteenth day of January of twenty fifteen, would hereby recognize the unselfish public service, tremendous commitment, and numerous contributions Mr. Prentice Bostick has made to benefit this county and its citizens, and wishes in the very best of luck in his future job. Congratulations. Thank you. Next up, we have a report from Mr. Robert Jordan of Hill and Jordan, our external auditor.
Chairman Lerner, Council, I have brought Jordan from Hill and Jordan here to deliver your audit report at year end of June third, twenty fourteen. And we will just be hitting the high points. If any of you have any questions, you can contact my office and we can be individual or group. And again, we'll be cutting just the high points briefly. It's better to make a long story short and a short story long. On page three. This is our audit report. Two of the parents left a little bit, a few years ago, which is a challenge. We report we have also found statements, states of management responsibility, some way to present our statements. Our responsibilities is to always count and express our opinion on the matter. In our opinion, the findings statements as presented here present the position of, the final position of him fair. I would then, in the questions, I would then direct you to page sixteen. On page sixteen, we have a balance sheet of the governmental funds, general fund, the capital project fund, these special revenue funds, special project funds, and their service funds. In the general fund. You can see the pool cash of about three million. And you can see that you have unsigned fund balance of some four billion eight, which would be in excess of the twenty percent of your budget at the county of years. In the special revenue fund, most of that is either restricted or assigned. And in the special project fund, that is not free to be used for any other purposes, unless it was your assignment. So in the debt service fund, use the entire debt. So as in total, the county has fund balance of eighteen seven out of total assets of nine D six one eight. Any question on the balance sheet? We'll turn to the next page. Page seventeen. This is your statement of revenues and expenditures and changes in fund balance. You can refer to that in the private industry as the income statement. It shows your revenues and your expenditures by category. You had total revenues of twelve million seven sixty-two, total expenditures twelve million eight seventy-seven, decreased the fund balance of one hundred and fifteen thousand. If you're looking at the general fund, you had a decrease in general fund balance of two hundred and forty-one thousand, which is considerably less than what you did but. Any questions on the statement of revenues and expenditures and changes in fund balances? Alright, and I would direct you to page nineteen. This is your fiduciary funds. And basically the treasurer shows you what he's holding, or it's like that's all other than the other entities. So some assets there of twenty-four billion, almost twenty-five billion. Any questions on that? Okay, I would then direct you to page twenty-seven. That's in the notes. And if you look at your deposits, at year end, your county's funds were completely collateralized. None of them, all of them had collateral. So you got some thirty million dollars there fully collateralized, should be safe. And the three deals, the capital assets and appreciation, the big increase here forces the administration to do. Any questions on this page, twenty-seven? On page thirty. This is note four. It has due to long-term debt. And of course, you're bonded and indebted, you're bonded and indebted in your lease obligations, that's three billion four. And you got two hundred fifty-seven thousand dollars in the next year. And of course, you've got another measure to compensate your absences, your landfill post-closeer cost, and your landfill obligation to help the county. Any questions on the long-term debt? Okay, I would then direct you to note seven on page thirty-two.
Be a bad word.
Note seven, we're talking about your posted floor that then gets other pension, other land pension benefits. As the last valuation date, two thousand fourteen, June thirty, you had an approved liability of one million sixty-nine, and none of that is funded. Any questions on that?
Said none of that is funded.
It is not funded, no, that's a, unfunded liability, I would say. What questions on the, pick it up, the benefits obligation? If not, you know, direct you to page thirty-four. Note eleven, talks about pending litigation. And I might say stuff about eight hundred twenty thousand dollars, legal costs, and testing this application of the landfill. And I'm sure everybody looks forward to taking it to the cemetery. Note thirteen. This is new governmental accounting standards coming down. This next year, that right, our name here, this GAN number sixty-eight. And you will be picking up in your financial statements, the ones that the financial analysts go over, you will be picking up your unfunded pension obligation. They're having pretty big yields. When they start looking, when you start looking at the issue of UBA and that sort of thing, that's what we take into consideration there. And so that's going to happen next year. We don't know exactly how it's going to be done. But the state, as opposed to the county, will have their share of pension obligation if we go on the books.
Does that mean they have to set it aside or just short on books? Do we have to physically have to set that money aside or to just short on our books?
No, they don't. It's just kind of like that other unfunded obligation. They can't, they can't make you do anything about it except make you disclose it.
Okay, as debt.
It has to, it has to be a law, this is a county's challenge. Any questions on the GAN statement number sixty-eight? If not, direct you to page verse six. This is your budgetary comparison, general fund, actual versus budget. You get budgeted revenues of eight million five ninety-four. Your actual revenue was eight million nine fifty-seven, about three hundred sixty-three thousand dollars favorable favoritism. If you looked at your total expenditures, you're budgeted nine million four, and you only incurred expenditures about nine million one sixty. So favorable favoritism there, three hundred fifteen thousand, almost three hundred sixteen thousand. After taking consideration transfers, you had budgeted a change, a decrease of fund balance five eighty-two, but you only had a budgeted decrease, a fund decrease of two hundred forty-two thousand, about three hundred forty-two billion. Any questions on the budgetary comparison?
I have one question, probably for staff. The fees for services and the license permits and fees, what's the difference between those categories? One of them seems- One of them's like a one point one million dollar, that it, that could be the county road service fee. It showed a deficit, and then the other one showed a positive of a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, so. Just curious. I'm looking at revenues. There's two different categories for fees. I'm just curious what they are.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Under revenue, there's a category for fees for services, that's a large number, and had a deficit. Small percentage wise, but deficit. And then there's another category for license permits and fees, which was a huge positive variance. I was just curious what those.
The license permits and fees, the vast majority of that amount is over budgeted, is related to self-charge fees.
Okay, that's a one-time thing.
Yes, that's right. And then as far as the taxes are concerned, that was another large increase. Half of that is related to motor vehicles. And then there's-
How about fees for services?
The fees for services, it had, had to do with the magistrate's reimbursement to the cities of the vast majority of that, because you're not doing that anymore.
A million dollars, that's probably, you sure that's not the county road maintenance fee?
Oh, no, I'm just saying what the variance was.
Okay, okay. That's fine, I was just curious, then we can follow up later.
Okay. Any other questions? On page fifty. On page fifty, our report on internal control of the financial reporting and compliance, general laws and regulations. You can read through all that, and you can come down to the bottom line. We do not confirm any sufficiencies and internal control that we consider to be material weaknesses. There, there could be other weaknesses, and it could be some material weaknesses that exist and not identified, and we did not identify. And for some clients, general laws and regulations, results by tests disclosed in instances of non-compliance. Any question on this report? And then the last page, that's page fifty-two. That's just a bit of a, a little federal, a little work. So if you can rest in that, with that interest, we'll see what's there, the way it's going to work. I did pretend to introduce Mr. Charles, sharing my coworker. We can't stop this off, y'all, and I assure you, we do appreciate the opportunity to work with you on the matter. And then, if you individually have any questions, please feel free to contact us and we'll get right with you.
Okay, any other questions, the auditor or staff? Okay, we have to take action later on to approve this. I'd ask that y'all hang around at least till that, in case we have another question at that time. We'll move fairly quickly. Thank you, Mr. Jordan. Okay, moving on to old business, our first item is ordinance seven thirty-two. It is an ordinance, third reading of an ordinance to transfer land to be designated by Flake Board America Limited. Mr. Haynes, can you-
Chairman, we've talked about this a couple times, it hasn't changed. It's an encroachment or an easement, losing power lines around the building that's going to be expanded, extended by what's now called a route though, but it's time to do it. They're still calling it, they're playful, so we left it playful, so we all know who that is. Again, third reading, everything is, and it allowed Martha electric to do that thing.
Any questions? Do I hear a motion to approve third and final reading of ordinance seven thirty-two? Mr. Blackman, you have a second? You want a second? Seconded by Mr. Steen. Any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. It's unanimous. Next up is ordinance seven thirty-three, which is an ordinance to postpone the implementation of revised values resulting from the equalization program, reassessment. The second reading, Mr. Haynes.
Second reading of the, of ordinance to postpone the revaluation and reassessment. This will keep us in line with the process that we've been using. And we are already beginning to work, some of the work ahead of, that we're doing ahead of time, this automatic work. And, and valuation work of new buildings and new construction. So we're beginning to do this, but all that will take place a year from now, if necessary, to keep us on schedule.
Okay, any questions from council? Do I hear a motion to approve second reading of ordinance seven thirty-three?
So move.
Mr. Woods, is there a second, Ms. Plato? Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. It's unanimous. Moving on to new business, first item is ordinance seven thirty-four, which is an ordinance to provide for the renewal of a lease of certain property by the county for a solid waste convenience center in Wallace, South Carolina. It's the first reading. I assume this is our latest convenience center, number nine?
Yes.
Just a renewal.
Convenience center in Wallace, we want to renew. At, at the time, while we're, while we're dealing with this, during the time period, you may want to talk to the property owners about purchasing or trying to find land to purchase. But this, this is a good deal for the time being. Keep it as new as possible, because it's, 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 it's there.
Okay, any questions? Any motion?
I move.
Mr. Steen is seconded by Dr. Prince to pass first reading. Any other discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. It's unanimous. Next on our new business is acceptance of the audit report that was just presented for the fiscal year end of June thirtieth, twenty fourteen. Are there any other questions, the staff or the auditor? If not, do I hear a motion to approve, accept the audit report as presented?
So move.
Moved by Dr. Prince, seconded by Mr. Gladon. Any other discussion? Hearing none, raise your right hand. Thank you. It's unanimous. Next up, appointment of boards and commissioners. I know of none, are there any? Nope, okay. And then we move on to reports, and our first one is our finance report from Ms. Ainsley Moore.
Mr. Chair, members of council, for the month of December, expenditures were at forty-seven percent of the budget amount. And that's quite a under budget for this point in the fiscal year. And we only have slight change in revenues for the month of December as compared to the prior month. However, we are anticipating a significant increase in January, and this could lead into the primary part of tax collections. And hopefully this will equalize or exceed the deficit of revenue margin extent. I don't have any new information on the legislation and the local government funding. I'm still keeping up with that and looking for changes, but so far I have a feeling. Are there any questions?
Any questions? Thanks. Next up is Mr. Haynes, his report, administrative report.
Chairman, members of council, it's not every board meeting where we hear bad to the bone being played by, you have your audit report. That says something about our governmental work. We're, we're, we're doing it right, I think, is what that may indicate. The, as we normally do, we recognize employees with five or more years of service of Auburn County through the month of December. And one of those is Councilman Ken Allen, sixteen years of service of the county. Judge Markeith, who's just in, this is where I'm saying, there, thirteen years. Perry Leggett, thirty years. William Parker, seventy years. Walter Pratt, fifteen years. And Roger Rober, forty years. These were through the month of December. We received a regulations update from the South Carolina Association of Counties, South Carolina Association of Counties regarding a proposal to repeal or amend regulations to eliminate redundant and unnecessary regulations. But, so we feel like that's probably a pretty good idea, but as you know, those things can, can be redundant and unnecessary in themselves. But if you have comments to make, the address is presented to you and the person who, whose attention it must be called is listed on your form. It's time again to file your two thousand fifteen statement of economic interest at the ethics form that the state requires with elected and some appointed official. Your last day of filing is March thirtieth of two thousand fifteen. And it took two of us to work the way, work my way through the first three or four questions the other day for mine. So I've, I'm just now beginning, we'll see how it goes. I don't think it's changed that much, I just forgot what my password is from last year. Regarding landfill litigation, a copy of the brief in opposition to the petition for writ of certiorari has been filed with the US Supreme Court by our attorneys, as we talked about the last meeting. A copy of the brief is attached in your, in your paperwork for your review and for you to have. As you know, and I know you see, because we talk about it a lot internally and send you notices about things going on, we continue to hear about the legislative proposal to give counties some responsibility for some of the state roads. Well, just recently, earlier this week, we received a survey form from the Association of Counties. They want to prepare some documentation saying this is how much it costs counties to take over these roads, or to provide maintenance to these roads. Well, in talking to Sidney Wallace, we don't know what it might take to take over maintenance of roads. We don't do that kind of maintenance on, on those kind of roads, and we don't know which roads we're talking about. So it's, that's going to be, it's going to be kind of tough. We're going to come up with some numbers, and Sidney and I will meet tomorrow, the next day. In fact, we're trying to get a copy of the state budget, the maintenance budget that the state uses for, for roads, to give us some idea as to what maintenance might cost if the county were to take it on. And then, of course, we often point to places where it's not being done like it should be, so maybe, maybe we ought to up the number one percent. But again, there's people working to try to prove the legislative ones, that this may or may not be a, a, a good idea for every county. We've received, no, we continue to do some work on the Blenheim school. We've got a good number that we signed a contract earlier this week to get some restroom facilities made, made handicapped accessible. Our card monies would go, should we be funded, would go to Blenheim Gym and continue to upgrade that. And the usage is still there. We're still getting that use on Thursdays and Sundays. And then today, earlier, we had a group that we gave permission, if they were, if they lose the use of the new gym at Blenheim because of basketball games being scheduled, they wanted to run a practice there on Tuesday night. So we, we can actually get some more use of the gym. So it's, it's growing. Word's getting out, people are beginning to use it, and, and seems to be working like we intended for it to. The, you may have it in front of you, or you may have already seen, the cards that- The, you may have it in front of you, or you may have already seen, the, the cards that, that, uh, are beginning to get out in the community earlier this week. These are the, uh, NACO prescription cards that the council approved from the citizens of the county. They're out, uh, they're in our building, we'll have some here, we'll have some in the courthouse, and we'll get them out into even retail establishments. But, uh, people can pick one of the cards up on site and actually use it at a drugstore for, for a potential discount. We have checks, make sure that the, uh, discounts will show up in the computers of the drugstores and, and that, so we're, we're operational there. You have in front of you, uh, a T-shirt that we ordered for employees, and it's just something different, something new. We wanted to get them before Christmas, but we kind of missed that, so, uh, about just a week or so. So anyway, it's just a little something to build, to build some teamwork, or build some attitudes as, as much as we can, and just, uh, and we've, we've given, given each of you a, a shirt to, to wear, and good health, I hope. The, uh, Association of Counties will hold a twenty-eighth annual mid-year conference, uh, Wednesday, February the eighteenth, in Columbia. There's, uh, a copy of the brochures, a plan for that, allow, uh, Patricia to empty major reservations or any of your payments or registration fees that you want to make. Also, uh, Mrs. Bundy will be attending the South Carolina clerk, the council's winter conference in, uh, at Lynchville Beach, uh, in February. Nice time to go. Uh, it's a good meeting, this is actually a business meeting for clerks, where we could sit down and, and she could sit down and talk about things like, how are we gonna get this electronic agenda to do just like we want it to do? Because if you struggle your way through that, you know, it's kinda hard to work, work your way from page to page or whatever. And, and we're talking to folks about how, what kind of programs they might have used, or things that we might do make it easier for you. I've met with Jeff Burr on the administrative parking lot across the street. He began, uh, earlier in the week at least, said, uh, no, that's last Friday. Last Friday, he said that he hoped it would begin in a couple of weeks, but I suspect he lost a couple of days to rain already on that schedule. So we, we are on a schedule, and, and we will, we will get, we will get that paid. Mrs. Bundy, again, has been able to place the December meeting on, uh, of council on YouTube, but we'll go back and pick up November's as well. One of the things we ran into was that our internet connection is slow in this building all of a sudden. This was one of the veterans, the courthouse is slow, the administrative building, and we're all on different, we're on different providers. The service is just slow in town, but it took something like eighteen hours to upload an hour-long meeting. So let's not beat much longer than an hour for that. We're gonna run over into work time, trying to get this thing loaded up onto the internet. So it's, uh, we're working with our computer folks to try to make sure that we're not clogging the, our own internet with downloading music or whatever we might be doing, playing background music in some of the offices and things like that, that's a current path. But we know we have some twenty-year-old firewall equipment, some hardware stuff that needs to be changed out. But even in the clean connections that we have, say, in this building, the connections, the connection speeds just aren't there that, that we really need to get big documents moved around. So we're working, we're working on that. Metro, uh, MetroCast has upgraded their system sometime around November, and you could actually see a difference. And we've got some new connections into the administrative building. But then, over Christmas, whether it's everybody getting a new smartphone, or an iPad, or whatever, that deteriorated. And maybe it's because they pulled it down to do some online maintenance or something in their work, I'm not sure. They haven't been successful with this. But anyway, we're watching it, we know, we know it's not like it ought to be, but, uh, we are working together to get those things uploaded and get them available to the public, you know, to meetings. And, and I, I talked today with the general manager of MetroCast in, in Maryland about franchises and about what it would take to get us a channel, uh, or, uh, something assigned to us so that we could have our, our program on. And I didn't get enough, so he's gonna do some more research. Right now, he felt like they were channel blocked in this area, but that they were willing to share with the city, if the, if the city was, might be willing to do that. But he was even gonna, uh, do some background research on that before we actually made it in terms of a proposal. So a lot of these things are kinda moving slowly, but they're, they're moving, and we're talking, and we're trying to get some things that'll help, help get your word, our word, out to the public. Any questions?
Any questions?
I have one little thing. In, in the order on page thirty-four, dealing with our, um, pending litigation, um, Mr. Jordan gave a figure of eight hundred and nineteen thousand, and I think I heard a figure of six hundred and fifty thousand.
I think I may have given you a bad number.
Okay. I was hoping that the six hundred and fifty thousand would be the right number, but...
Their, their numbers won't be accurate, in fact, later, after saying that. That's probably what they were going to...
Yeah, yeah.
At least seven fifty.
Exactly.
I think we made a report, two or three months ago.
Exactly. Okay.
Well, just to be clear, for the record, and for anybody's watching, or, or the press, what, what they're referring to is we've spent eight hundred and nineteen thousand dollars on legal fees to fight the landfill, not six hundred thousand.
Some different firms, the fellow who was here was reporting some lesser amount, but that was with his particular firm, I think. And we, we had a history before that of, of being expensive. But anyway, that's, uh, that's the effort.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Haynes. I don't believe anyone signed up to speak. Uh, next we have the recognition of, uh, council members. Uh, start down here this time. Mr. Gladon?
First, uh, Jason, I have to see you sitting in the hot seat. Number one, seriously, there's a couple of things that's, that's going on. One thing, Purple Heart Resolution six twenty-one, uh, pleased to date that, uh, I met with one of the commanders out of, uh, Florence, and I gave him a copy of the regulation that we all, all agreed to from the county. Uh, that's something I didn't talk about in the county, but this is really a good deal for the veterans. Veteran, veterans have been wanting to do things of that nature, they got special programs for that. You also want to look at trying to, um, work on the fact of getting, uh, a van, to try to help the veterans here going back and forth to hospitals and, and doctor's appointments, that's, that's really important. But the most important thing to me right now, that I'm looking at, is our legislators that we care. For the past four or five years, I've been taking a real close look at this year. And, and we got a problem, a serious problem. If, if you look at the citizens, what our legislators have in the county, um, Jackie Hayes, real nice person, but we got very small citizens in the county. So by having small citizens in the county, you're gonna have a lot of input. And I sort of feel like no matter how small a citizen you have, you should step up. But he's a good guy, but he really don't do what he should do. And I think he worked with Elizabeth a little bit. Ken Williams, he only have four percent in the county, but he's still our citizen. You gotta start asking yourself, what are you doing for the county? You don't have a four percent, but still, he's our citizen. So you have to help make decisions, you have to come and work with us, and they don't. Elizabeth Monk, past four years, I watched her real closely, because she came in the new, and, and being a woman at that. To look at what kind of support that she received from all of the citizens, which was really so close to none, it, you know, and that's a fact. I mean, she really didn't get any help. And if anybody that supported her any at all, then I would go with, um, Jackie Hayes. He verbally contracted work with her. But when it came down to the other two citizens, she asked me, no support. So she couldn't get anything done. And I think this is the reason why she chose not to, you know, to stay, not to run, all right? Now we've got a new house representative. And I'm hoping that if we stay on top of our legislators, if we stay on them, maybe we can make them work with our new representative. I think she wants to try to work with the county, I'm gonna give that benefit of the doubt, that she wants to work with the county. But she's gonna need help, and, and our legislators got help. And the only way they're gonna help her, help her, is that they read send letters, and we let them know that tired of them being our legislators, and they don't know. I mean, this is the fact, they're not trying to knock anybody specifically, but they really have not done anything for county. Look at the past four years, and, and then ask yourself, what did, what are you doing? What, what are you can't do? What did they even do? I mean, just ask yourself. And if you come up with two things, come back and let me know, because I doubt if you can. This is, this is on us. So we really got to just turn around and put, make them put their foot out to the fire and say, hey, listen, y'all gonna stay here? Y'all gonna stay in office? Y'all got to work with us. And that's not happening. And this is really, really, and this has been going on for years, it's time for it to stop. And the only way it's gonna stop is for the citizens, the citizens to start voting, and letting our legislators know, hey, we tell y'all not doing anything. And if it's me, let me know. I mean, you know, I'm like the official, let me know, hey, Louis, I don't like what you're doing, you ain't doing nothing. Then vote me out. Almost. But make us do what we're supposed to do. That's what we got to start doing this year. We also, we got to start working with, uh, school board members, we got to work closely with them, we got to work with the city of Veniceville, because they got the money, we don't. We got to join forces, we got to get with them, we got to meet with them and work out some programs, this and thing is going, join them. I mean, that's what we're talking, just boom, went up, you know? Because this is what they did. If we don't do it, we're gonna stay stuck, right here, every year, being broke, we can't do nothing. I'm finished, I don't want to be in this.
Well, yeah. Fortunately or unfortunately, we don't time you, so you're okay.
Oh, well, okay.
Mr. Allen, you're closer to it now. Mr. Blackman? Dr. Prince?
I'd like to wish everybody a new year, and, uh, a lot of work to be done in two thousand fifteen, a lot of problems. Mr. Gladon, um, brought forth some issues and concerns. Um, my biggest concern is revenue. We can't do what we want to do for our citizens and for our employees. Uh, we must find industry appropriate for demographics in our county, that's just the bottom line. And those folks down in Columbia must do what they're supposed to do with the local government fund, we cannot survive. If they continue to cut us, then we need to cut the unfunded mandates that they're saying we have to, uh, fulfill. If they cut us four percent, we need to cut them four percent. Uh, budget times are hard personally and county, uh, listening to the auditor and the kinds of things that we're responsible for, the kinds of things we need in the county. We need jobs, we need, um, better educational opportunities for people that are out of school and other things. So I agree with a lot of the things that Mr. Gladon has said, everybody's got to work together. And if you check the egos at the door, and let's get something done for the county. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Steen?
Uh, just want to thank council members for, uh, voting me as vice chair. I want to thank Dr. Prince, uh, you know, she's done an exceptional job. I watched her as a citizen, as, uh, you know, the, what she did as chairman, the vice chairman, and working together. And I think the council has worked together over, uh, the past few years real good, and I want to continue to try to do that. And just echo is what they said, you know, some of the bigger counties, we've seen, another day where Spartanburg County, one of the bigger counties is, uh, is talking about it, they're, they're not funded at the local government fund level, and their numbers are huge compared to what we're not funded at. But a huge county like that, if the local government fund's that important to them, imagine how it is to a, a smaller county, so, uh... And they are gonna take some drastic measures, and, whereas others said, you know, as council members, we may have to, we're gonna have to at least look at that, you know? Uh, I just, every, every, every letter we get says their, their delegation is opposing, you know, or supporting a hundred percent fund a local government fund, but whenever it comes down, I mean, that, we hearing that it's not funded. So somewhere, somewhere along the line, they're telling the wrong things is what we're hearing, so, uh, but, uh, we've got a lot of work to do, and we'll, uh, we'll give it a shot and see what we can do in two thousand fifteen.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Ms. Plato?
First, I'd like to say Happy New Year to everybody, because I don't think I've seen nobody in since last year. So Happy, Happy... No, I just... But I'd like to say Happy New Year to everybody, and I look forward to continuing working with council. And, um, we've come a long way, but yet we got a long ways to go. And we're gonna run over a lot of bumps, but I hope that we can find ways to work around those bumps and hurdle over. We are, I like to say that we work good together, and, uh, I think, uh, Mr. Bundy said in a statement that he made, regardless of how we work, we're gonna have some disagreement, but we can do some civil disagreements. And, uh, that's true, and we're gonna have those. But we need to find ways to grow, and, uh, I'm, I'm really happy about the, uh, book mobile that's coming, and that Mr. McGrove and her staff at the library, they're doing a wonderful job over there. And just like Mr. Dr. Prince said, it's more than just handing out books over there, it's a job. And, uh, we really appreciate the work that she do. Also, I would like to thank, uh, Mr. Haynes, Mr. Easton, Ms. Bundy, Mrs. Bundy, and Ms. McQueen for the job y'all do. And, uh, I really appreciate everything y'all do to help, help us out. And all the county workers and employees, the heads and the, uh, employees, all the work that they do in the county, we really appreciate it. And, um, but there's always room for improvement, and we're working toward that. Uh, also, let me see, what else I want to say here? I don't think there's a lot of... Also to the, uh, to, uh, Mr. Blackman, I would like to, uh, say that I'll, I'll be visiting your daughter after a while. It won't be long, and I, I know you thrilled to death about that, and I'm really happy for you, but I will be going to see her. So I think that's all I have to say, but I just look forward to working with everybody, and we got a year to go ahead with, uh, we're gonna work, we're gonna work. And the last year, we still find you at, but we're gonna fight to the very end with it. We're not gonna give up, we're not gonna give up. And, uh, I think that's about all I have to say.
But I need to amen up and out.
The, um, some of the, um, um, problems we have, in two thousand fifteen, there was, um, a statement that I was about to say. A new day, yesterday, last year, five years ago, that's over with, that's done. So there's no need for us to hop on what we've done in the past. If we continue to look in the past and say what we're wrong, I can't do progress. But we all, we think about what's done in the past. Um, Senator Williams, Senator Malloy, our representative, Clayo, Clayo is the buck of my ear, so Clayo first. The county and Clayo, that's how I look at it. And Senator Williams and Senator Malloy and Senator Jackie Hayes had helped Clayo in two thousand fourteen. They had a meeting in December, um, extended their hand and their knowledge and their support in our financial situation in Clayo. So, um, you know, it's, when you, when we lash out at anybody, including myself and everybody in here, we need to get all our data first and foremost. But, um, with, um, Ms. Honorable, uh, Patricia Henneken coming into the fold, into the fold, we as a council, like I agree with Mr. Glad, we all need to take a step back, forget what happened in the past, and say, let's, what can we do now for two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen? That was important, nothing but in the past. We all have past, some good, some bad. But we cannot hop on something that in the past and hope and pray that we do something in the future. We know what we got to do. And first and foremost, we got to swallow ego and say, what about our children? Let's do this, first and foremost. What we need to do, what can we do to help economic development? What can we do to help school board? What can we do to help our employees? That's what we need to do. We, you know, we need to come together, and we know who the power to be, the power to be, or the power to be. You know, that haven't changed. But we got to voice ourselves, but when we start fussing and, and accusing and saying, you're not doing this, you're not doing that, everybody's gonna close up by this time. Everybody got to do so. Ain't nobody gonna swing it. And then we will be right in the same road we in. So I know, um, for a fact that, um, um, and Senator, uh, Williams, he gets the focus, the two people focus that he got, is in Clayo, and a little bit of, of district self, but he don't, you know, generally in our district. In my district, hey, I don't go to district two, I ain't got no vote for that. And that is, that's my bread and butter. My people's in Clayo. And I, I talk with my people in Clayo. Ms. Allen, he taught me people more. Everybody talks about, uh, on the area first and foremost, and then we come as a group to, uh, say that, what can I help you with? You know? So, um, you know, but I said, that's, it's a new day. Don't worry about last year, don't worry about two thousand seven, two thousand eleven, don't worry about two thousand fifteen, first and foremost.
Thank you. Everybody's got a lot to say, and we, I agree that we need to move forward with everything we do, and give people an opportunity to, to have a new day and, 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 uh, act differently if there's been problems in the past or whatever, including us. So, and we'll see where that goes. Um, I want to thank you all for your vote for chairman next year. I appreciate that, and I'll do my best to do a good job with that. Um, I, for the last few years, we've had, uh, some strategic planning meetings, the first day every year, and... Um, I, for the last few years, we've had a little strategic planning meetings, the first day every year, and I think it'd be appropriate to have one before the February meeting. I assume, uh, or I don't assume, but I, I would think we would have it as a work session before the regular meeting, we've done that in the past, does that suit everyone? We'll try to work that out and get back with you, and so we can, um, set some goals or some direction for staff to go as they prepare the budget and as we move forward. Twenty fourteen for me personally, in business and all, was a very tough year, a lot going on, and feel like didn't get a lot done, and I felt that way about the council as well. Not necessarily anybody's fault, but it just, you know, a lot of, uh, open doors, as, as Councilman Woods always says, that I'd like to see us try to, to shut. And two particular, uh, issues that, uh, I feel like we should focus on are economic development, as always, and take a, with staff, take a hard look at that and see, you know, if there are any different strategies or something we can do differently, uh, to have, uh, have better results, and also to make sure we're all in sync with appropriate industries and sites and that sort of thing. And the other is recreation, um, we've made some improve, we did make some improvements with the Blenheim Gym, and, um, but there are other things we can potentially do. I don't wanna spend all the taxpayer's money or spend up the fund balance, but if, if we were gonna spend the money we can free up, it ought to be on those two things. We have seen, uh, some positive results from past economic development activities, like the Tri-County Industrial Park, we're starting to see tax revenue there, the one down on ninety-five. So, it takes, uh, years sometimes to see the fruits of our labor, and, uh, I think it's just a good time to take an inventory and assessment of where we are, and what we've done, and, and things that we can try to do differently. So, that's my sermon for today. Anyone else have anything to say? If not, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Do I have Mr. Steen, all in favor, raise your right hand? Yes.